We'll call this meeting of the Rockingham School District to order. It is Monday, January 8th, 2018. Do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
Well, I'm not sure we really have reports. No, principals are gone.
No.
Yeah, I'll have a brief one.
Okay, review and approve board minutes from December 18th, 2017?
The minutes should be edited to show that Harris was present. He's not listed on the other people.
Sorry, Ed.
The teacher, Harris, Mr. I forget his first name.
Matt.
Matt, Matt Harris, that was present.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the December 18th, 2017 meeting as amended.
Do we need to add anything about why Matt was here or just that he was?
Well, he's mentioned in the minutes.
All in favor accepting the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Communication and public comments?
I don't have any for you.
Policies?
No, not at the moment.
Superintendent's report?
Just a couple of things. I've gotten the integrated field review, final document back, and I think I put it in the folder for next time. Not really for discussion, but this time, but I thought you would want to look at it. So it's in this meeting's folder on the web. And if you're at home, just a reminder, WNSU webpage, you can click on the Rockingham School Board documents. And if you click on this meeting that we're at right now, which is 1/8/18, you'll see all the documents folks are looking at. We're, this is kind of a WNESU note, but we're bringing a candidate forward for Director of Student Services at the next WNESU meeting. That is on the 24th. I finally got the date right.
I won't be there.
Speaking, yeah, so we have records coming to us. But that is all I have for a report.
Okay. I guess that would be under WNESU board. Here's Edie just in time.
Why don't we just give her a second though?
Do we have anything from any committees?
No.
So I won't be able to go to the SU meeting on the 24th. I'll be out of town, so. Somebody else is able to go to my place.
I'll be here, but I'm supposed to be there.
I'll put it in. The 24th, right?
My God, did you say you weren't?
I am able to be there.
So a few two are there, that's good.
I'll plan to be there.
During this brief intermission, did everyone have nice holidays?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it was so warm.
Yeah.
It was in Florida.
Some people were warm.
It must've been a shocker where you got back there.
Oh my gosh, that walk from the airport to the car. Because we had left all the jackets in the car. Yeah, it must've been pretty comical for anyone watching us.
I'm sure you weren't the only ones. Were we doing principal reports?
Far enough to that.
Oh, none, okay.
Finally, I made it.
We're really not watching. No pressure.
A lot of weight to carry.
I don't know, you, did you have an update on this year or with you?
On, as far as the financial goes?
Yeah.
For tonight?
No.
Um, no.
Okay, so we're skipping over that part of it.
We'll go right to budget discussion then.
Okay, and I do, did make copies in case anyone wants them.
I would like a copy.
I would too, please.
Sure.
It is the one thing I have a hard time making up.
I looked over it yesterday.
It is. I, I find it more difficult than if I have it in my hands. Okay. They're all separate, all clipped. Thank you.
Oh, okay, I see what you're doing here. All right. Here's your clip back.
Yep, I'll reuse those.
Oh wait, I need one of those.
Oh yeah, thank you.
So Rick, I leave one of the ones that you just gave her.
It is kind of to look at. I was thinking that when I printed it.
Uh, I don't think I uploaded the tuition.
Isn't it right here? The tuition is not there. Oh, I'm sorry, it's the tax estimate.
Thank you, thank you.
Never mind.
Looks like I should release. It's really short. Okay. Sometimes it's like, what is this? My dad for so many weeks for. What do you ask? What do you need? You know, you want to find me? She's like, you know, like.
I was talking myself like the ones that we had. On it, like I shouldn't have to bring them.
It was my fault. I haven't had a chance to talk to her. No, I can't hear for some reason, but I think maybe I don't. Yeah. Jack back. He nominates himself as the chairman. And then. Yeah, but I think we've passed the draft. And what? But I think it's. Good for you. I need to do the paperwork. For some reason, I can also see Franklin. Do the BSB, so how they didn't.
So since your last discussion, what's happened here is the capital projects came out of the line items. Because you're gonna pay for those with the articles. So. Otherwise, it's the same. We put the $200,000 in as the apply, on the revenue sheet, the first line. Applied $200,000 of the surplus to offset taxes. So between those two things, your education spending, which is line 11 on the revenue budget, is actually gonna drop by 209,796. That's a good thing. No, there's no other shoe to drop here. It's all good. If you flip over to the tax estimation sheet, and this is still just a draft sheet, because we haven't received the real one from the state yet, is that right?
No, we got the real one, but the legislature can still make adjustments to it.
Okay, so it's real now.
Yeah, it is real. Yeah, we got it last week.
Okay. So you can see in the very top of this sheet, the property dollar equivalent yield of $9,842. That is how the legislature would raise more money for education. They dropped that number, so it takes more taxes to raise what they need. So that's the 80, at least tentatively, that's how the $80 million hole is being filled that the legislature and governor created last year. The governor says that they're not gonna fill it this way, but I haven't seen any other suggestions, so it's really out of our hands anyway. There's your budget number, the 9,776,950. And there's your your ed spending number is the 14th line down, 9,5,850. Your spending per equalized pupil has dropped actually by 3.09%. And so your CLA, we have that number now, that went up a bit. When the CLA goes up, your taxes go down. This is just, there's no bad news here. It just keeps coming. So even with the nine cents increase that the state has gifted us with, with this budget, we estimate your taxes will go down about a little more than four cents.
Yep.
Pretty good.
And if you look at line 37, that's the estimated cost or your tax rate for the high school. And that's going up about four cents. So right now, it appears your tax rate will be pretty much even.
And I guess if folks in Mount Pealeer come up with some clever way to raise part or all of the $80 million, maybe it'll go down some more, but I don't know.
It'd be nice if they would raise that yield a little, that the property dollar equivalent yield. And that would force your tax rate down some more, but we'll have to wait and see what the final numbers come out. This is the Tax Commissioner's recommendation.
Any questions or discussion? We've been over this a number of times and hashed it out. Just Edie and her staff's hard work, principals diligence in maintaining their budgets and filling in all the appropriate things. You've done pretty good. You guys all done pretty good. All we done is looked it over.
And it's a good year. It doesn't always turn out that swell.
Oh, I don't have anything to add.
Tuition calculation, do we wanna review that?
Do we have to? Do we have to approve the?
Yeah, and that's a couple of items down here. Are you approved?
Shall we move along then? Any business for discussion or action? Authorized payment from Capital Reserve Fund for middle school windows for $50,000.
So this was the item, this and the next one are the two items you talked about at the last meeting. Wanting to take money out of the Capital Reserve to pay for, but it wasn't on your agenda, so we said put it on this agenda. Talked about it last time, the $50,000 is for the storm windows at middle school. And the other piece is the replumbing for the boiler.
Well, there was some discussion about some follow-up with how the window regional programs work with regard to the boiler.
Yeah, Rick Schuman is working on that, so. And it was still a live email stream today when I looked at what he was doing, so I think we should, we should talk about it again, but I don't.
Is the replumbing tied to that as well, or is that independent?
I think that was, in my memory, that was independent.
Right. But you're right though, Evan, because we were figuring in some grant money.
There were grants and discounts.
Yeah.
Let's work on number A for, on letter A. Authorized payment from Capital Reserve Fund for middle school windows, $50,000.
I'll make a motion that we authorize payment for Capital Reserve, to move money from the Capital Reserve Fund for the middle school windows renovation for up to $50,000.
Any discussion?
Probably the wording should be to expend.
Expend.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Now B, to authorize payment from Capital Reserve Fund for replumbing and controls for the boiler system for the amount of $6,750.
I'm gonna move that we defer that to our next meeting. Bar, to hear fresh input from Rich.
I don't think that's a bad thing.
Okay. Any opposition to deferring it? Onto number C. Would we need to vote on that?
Well.
So there's a motion on the floor to defer this to the next meeting.
Probably tabling us though.
Table.
Do we have to vote on tabling it?
Yeah.
We will, we will anyways. Then we're covered.
Okay. Make a motion that we table the.
All in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Until the next meeting?
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will table authorizing payment for the boiler system work until the next meeting. C, approve the fiscal year 19 budget.
I'll move that we authorize the proposed revenue and expenditure budgets for fiscal year 2019 as presented to us this evening. For a total.
There's 76,952.22.
The number's right here.
Okay. So since this is our big one, Josh, can you repeat it as you've heard it and are writing it down, so we?
Evan Moore moved to approve the fiscal year 19 budget for a total of $9,776,952.22. Yes, I do. With Marcus.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Approve warning articles.
So these are set up kind of per your discussion from last time. 179,347.66 to go into Capital Reserve Fund. Another fund to be established of $200,000 to reduce taxes in fiscal year 2020.
Don't we need an item also for the $200,000 surplus we're applying to fiscal year 19?
No, that's just part of your budget.
Okay, so it's rolled in there.
Yeah, it's rolling, it's not a reserve. Otherwise, that's, that's really it. The question is just always, have I corrected and changed everything that's supposed to be corrected in here? Because I keep pasting and changing the document every year.
Chris, do we have to specifically say that 55,572 is coming from the Cherry Hill Reserve? I'm not sure if we have to, because that's like a separate reserve.
I didn't do anything with the Cherry Hill Reserve. Now, that's a question though.
So that amount is not in this 179?
Yeah, it's included in that.
It's part of that.
No.
If you look at the applied surplus on the revenue sheet, I spelled it out.
You're right, I'm gonna need to reword that one.
I'm just thinking that we have, they gave us the ability to spend the money for Cherry Hill. We need to get them to.
So I'm gonna need, you're right. So.
I wasn't even thinking about that.
Yeah.
Till now.
Yeah, this went through a couple of different iterations and I missed that.
Yeah, me too. So. So the 123,775,65 from the surplus plus the 55,572 from the Cherry Hill Reserve for a total of 179. That way they can't, no one misunderstands what we're doing.
So can we just amend this to say that?
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just feeling a little confused. So what I printed out from online had an extra arti, well, it had an article that mentioned Cherry Hill specifically, the Cherry Hill 55,000.
And I ditched that, but then I didn't.
But he didn't update his math.
Okay. I was, sorry, I was still back a few steps.
Uh, you're, well.
Well, we were hoping to hear something and we've heard nothing.
So, yeah, so the, the way these will be amended is they'll probably, I will add another article that specifically says that we're taking what's left over from the Cherry Hill Reserve and putting it into a reserve fund.
Okay, so more like your earlier version?
Yeah, so it'll be structured like Article 2. So there'll be one more article.
So do we need to put this off or can we?
No, you, I mean, you could approve the amended warning. I'll just have, you'll just, it's not as convenient because I don't, you're gonna have to stop in and sign it, yeah. Sorry about that.
It's the worst thing that we have to deal with.
Yeah.
So can I just ask a clarifying question, Edie? When we talk about fiscal year, because it spans two calendar years, right? Is it called, like, the fiscal year 17 would be?
Last year. It's the year that.
It's the year that it ends.
Correct.
Okay. So on the tax revenue?
In June 30th, 2017?
Yeah, so this year is FY '18 because the last half of the year is '18.
So why, why are we on this document here?
Yeah.
So the last column is?
19.
High school year 19.
We're doing the budget for the 18, 19.
Okay.
School year.
That's what I, yeah.
And we use.
Taxes, the property taxes are already through, set for '18.
But, so isn't, so is the fund balance then?
The surplus.
That's from last year?
Yeah, we wait until. Yeah, we wait until it's audited. So we just went through the sixteen seventeen audit, so we know it's real numbers.
Okay.
And then that's what we put in nineteen, so we're all, there's always two years between the surplus and the budget.
Okay.
Because my crystal ball isn't that good. I don't dare guess what we're gonna have in eighteen to put into nineteen. I'd rather wait until we have the auditor's blessings.
Thank you for helping me.
It is, it's, it's very confusing. I have to stop sometime and figure out what year I'm in, um...
Yeah.
Because the audit was on seventeen, we just finished that up. We're trying to get a handle on eighteen, but we're, I'm working on nineteen. It's, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It is confusing. It's not you, it's, it's confusing.
Well, should we make a motion to approve the warning articles as amended with the Cherry Hill amendment?
Yes. Did you just make that motion?
I just made that motion. Did you catch that? Make it sound a little better.
Any, any further discussion on this? All in favor of approving the warning articles as amended? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Review town report materials.
Which we don't really have.
Which we don't really have, other than the, the...
In the tax, well, these items.
Tax sheet, the letter I wrote for the...
Your letter is about such.
I'll add, as Evan noted, I'll add something, it has been brought up, it'd be nice to add something about the, um, lunch program.
Coming.
Food program. So I'm gonna add that in, but I think, I agree with what you said, I thought the rest of it was more, I think the rest of it's more for the town, the actual town meeting day, but since it's my letter, I guess I could make that decision.
You do. You hold the candle.
Approve announced tuition, unless there's anything more about reviewing town report materials, so...
Okay, um... In order to calculate this, I take out things that have nothing to do with, um, the K through eight tuition, like early and preschool. Uh, food services optional to a tuitioning child. Um, tuitioning students rarely take our buses, they're usually transported, that's all removed. Um, special ed, because not all students are in special ed. Um, so, and then the after-school program, um... So, I break down the middle school by their enrollment, um, for elementary and secondary, and then the throughout is the whole budget, the elementary and secondary, and those are the percentages. Um, so when I come down to it, I was gonna try to use ADM, but, um, the middle school, the seventh and eighth ADM was low, and I'm not sure why. But anyway, um, it kicked your, your, um, tuition rate up in the twenty-three thousand range. So I went back to using enrollment, um, from the October first. And this is how the calculation works out. Now, down at the very bottom, um, is the tuition without capital debt. I really don't see any advantage anymore for removing capital debt. There is no state aid, um, for construction, so, but I always include it. Um, the board can set it for whatever number they want. Um, it's just that any student that's tuitioned in, um... We can't charge them more than what the board sets it for. We can always charge them less, but we have to be consistent. Um, all students pay the same amount, uh, but, um, once a number is set, then, um... Oh, um, we can't, we can't charge more than that. Now you are getting more students being tuitioned into seventh and eighth from, from the three sending towns, Athens, Grafton, and Westminster. So, it's up to you, um...
So do you know offhand with last year's, it's what we approved last year?
That's in that blue and it's really hard to read.
But is that including the capital debt or without the capital debt?
Including.
Including it from last year?
Yeah. And if you look around this area, most schools are within the fifteen thousand-plus range. Um, I was surprised it came out as high for the, um, middle school, but...
And what was the, what's your...
The ADM?
That's the reason?
The ADM for this year for seventh and eighth grade was only ninety-six. So, that, that kind of floored me, so I went back and used the enrollment because I don't think ninety-six is, is right. Um... So...
So it's a big jump, you know?
It is a big jump, even from the fifteen you all approved for this year, uh, to next. And you are getting more and more, um, seventh and eighth graders. Um, and I don't know if, if that high of a rate will deter...
I was gonna, I was wondering about that.
That, yeah, that, it is kind of high.
So you weren't, you weren't able to see what in our FY eighteen budget seems to be driving that increase on the middle school?
Well, I just went through, and then, see, it's kind of arbitrary because what I do is I take the middle school instruction and I break out the, um, elementary, the secondary, and the throughout, I split.
Right, all, all the different splits are laid out here, just trying to understand that.
I... I didn't really see anything that stood out, um...
The enrollment figure is, for seventh and eighth grade is roughly the same as last year?
Uh, yeah, pretty much. The ADM was not for the middle school. The, um, seventh and eighth grade ADM, and I want to look into that further. Um, and I'll, I'll check in with you, Karen, and see, but that, that seemed rather low for... Um, and that would have come off your fall census. It went in, what, November seventh?
Something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, but I pulled it off the stra, state spreadsheet.
Okay. Is this something that needs to be voted on tonight?
It's due to the state by January fifteenth. That's the deadline. If you do nothing, your tuition won't change from the current year. Um, but yeah, there weren't, um, you did have a prior year tuition that was deducted, and all of that hit the middle school. Um, so yeah, that was just under forty thousand, um...
That was over, basically like an overpayment, right?
Right, from a prior year, right? And, um, of course, food service is higher, but most of that hit the, um, K through, um, six for Rockingham.
So if we approve something lower than the seventeen six...
You are more than welcome to do that. We just can't charge...
Do you foresee any problems if we do?
No, because anything you get, receive in tuition money is a bonus. I mean, if they don't come, that hurts, but if they do... Um, and yeah, there's a lot more of the Athens, Grafton, and Westminster students uh, tuitioning to the middle school, which is awesome.
I would hate to discourage that in any way.
Well, I'm not sure that, that isn't how parents make a decision about tuition.
That's true.
They make a decision based on the school. Because their taxes are paying for it.
Right. Yeah, the parents don't see this, but...
So if we go with a higher number, you know, that's based on, in the yellow here, is that likely to come back to us at some time with a payment back to districts for overpayment?
It, it could, once everything settles out, yeah. Because we won't know that until... Two years from now.
The other side of that is if we go too low and it's less than our cost, then we can't recover it, correct?
Uh, you can if it's, um...
Below the state average.
If there's a, there's a three thousand, or a three thousand, three percent cap either way. So if you undercharge ten percent, you could collect seven. If you overcharge ten percent, you have to give back seven. That three percent, you don't have to either give back or would you get back? Um...
So...
The seventeen six is high for those schools in this area. But no, it's not gonna make a difference as far as the parents making a decision.
So, Chris, or Edie, I'm wondering if you have a recommendation that... Based on prior year's knowledge and patterns that you've seen? Not necessarily?
Not necessarily. I, I mean, you're not like, it's not like you're a high school where there might be tuitioned students, or, you know, the, the cost might be in a track, a factor.
I think one of the, I think what Edie just pointed out is kind of an important thing to remember, like, if, you know, if this is too high or too low, then it's gonna be rectified down the road, so...
I mean, the other thing...
Sometimes those, not surprises, but that rectification can cause us to be like, oh, there's a big chunk of money that just has to be paid back to the districts like we just did.
Right.
And luckily we had good surpluses to help cover that, but if we don't have those surpluses in, you know...
Yeah, I mean, you can always approve a lower figure of, you know, seventeen thousand or...
Do we get many or any K through six tuitions?
No.
You're just required to set it.
The only towns that can do that don't operate a K through six.